Like to call to your order the Town of Niskiuna Planning Board and Zone Commission, February 24th, 2025, meeting. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Millsbaugh.
Here.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Here.
Ms. Belovski.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Darpino.
Here. Next up is approval of the minutes. We do not have any minutes for this meeting, so we'll move over to public hearings. We do not have any public hearings scheduled for tonight, so we will open it up to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open to any resident that would like to speak about any planning or zoning matter. The Town of Niskiuna, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
It's my second privilege of the floor of the day, so I'm getting used to this. Denise Cashmere, 9:49.
Can you pull that microphone just towards you?
9:49 Pierce Road.
Thank you.
People usually tell me I talk too much and too loud. I'm going to maybe sound a little bit like a broken record because I was here before to talk about drainage on Pierce Road. It seems to be my topic that I've been going on and on about. And this is in regard to the 929 Pierce Road subdivision. The new map that was put out with the latest does display the contour lines that this board requested. I contend that these contour lines for the property at 943 Pierce Road, which is two doors down, labeled as grinded, are incorrect. The elevations and slope of that property were changed with the construction that occurred in 2021, which resulted in numerous water problems and drainage issues for my property, which is next door south, and that of the Rockwells on Brookshire Drive, which is also adjacent to the proposed subdivision property we're discussing tonight. If you refer to the approved site plan map that that property, you will see that both the front and the back contour lines were changed by bringing in a substantial amount of fill and increasing the slope away from their house, most notably in the back. Actually, when I kind of looked at both of them, it's over three and a half feet, which is fairly significant. That is crucial to note because even though this developer had stated that the drainage will flow west from the new subdivision, it in fact predominantly flows north down the back property lines of the adjacent adjoining properties. That fact was actually confirmed by Laura Robinson at the February 5th meeting of the Conservation Advisory Council. My property is two lots down, and my garage sits 31 feet off of that property line. And as I have mentioned to this board in the past, I have groundwater seeping up through my garage floor as a result of the increased elevation and the slope changes that were made to that property next door. This proposed subdivision will only contribute to those drainage issues. Clearing. I also bring to your attention the limits of clearing on the proposed lots. I did hear it stated that clearing out old trees, et cetera, is discouraged, but can you guarantee that? Again, I go back to the construction at 943 Pierce Road, adjacent to my property. Every single tree was removed. Needless to say, this was not in any way helpful to securing runoff and help with drainage. Lastly, I want to quickly discuss the topic of the berm if necessary. That's also stated on this new map. Again, I go back to my experience with the recent construction I've already mentioned. Yes, a berm was put into place after I forced the issue since it was on the approved site plan map. The same with check dams. Both were supposed to be permanent, checked regularly, maintained, and replaced as needed. None of that has ever happened, and all were useless rather very quickly. Again, I leave you with the words of your town planner, again, stated recently at the meeting of the Conservation Advisory Committee. Code states that you cannot make any drainage situation worse with new construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nadia Rockwell. I reside at 2488 Brookshire Drive. I know we do sound like broken records, and I know Laura, you've heard all of us for years and years and years, but we're trying to relay to everyone how frustrated we are because we've been through this. And I know we shouldn't assume that the builder at 929 Pierce Road will intentionally do harm onto us, but that was our experience before, and we trusted the town and that previous builder at 943 Pierce Road to do the right thing. I know I stated before that we tried talking to him personally because he also lived there. Things escalated very quickly. So Denise mentioned some of these things, but I just want to reiterate some things and kind of put in my own words also. I see with the new plans for 929 Pierce Road, there is a stormwater retention area. 943 Pierce Road, which was the beginning of all of our headaches, had stormwater management plans that were never enforced. Town was made aware several times about the issue, many issues, and the problems continued to be ignored that we were having at 2488 Brookshire Drive and also at Denise's property. Stormwater management plans are great only if they're enforced. The check dams at 943 Pierce Road, based on the site plans, are permanent and have to be maintained. They have never been maintained. Silt and rocks are continuously going down to the neighboring properties. Clearcutting occurred at 943 Pierce Road, like Denise mentioned. Every tree, every single tree was taken down. Previously, it was mentioned that you were hoping that this isn't the case at 929 Pierce Road, but again, who will enforce this and how will it be enforced? Denise mentioned the contour lines at 943. That property was built up very high. So the contour lines on the revised plans for 929, I just ask that you guys look at that and look at the plans from 943 because, I mean, three feet, I think, is a lot, especially when we're talking about the water damage and all the drainage that we had to put in after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else here for privilege of the floor? All right, Laura, is there anyone online that wishes to speak at privilege of the floor?
There is no one online. We did receive one email, which we'll forward to the board and include in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seeing as there's no one else on privilege of the floor, we're closed privilege of the floor. Next up is unfinished business, and we have no unfinished business. So we'll move on to new business. First up is a resolution, 2025-05, a resolution for sketch plan approval for a two-lot subdivision at 2727 Balltown Road. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this sketch plan as a minor subdivision as defined by Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant sketch plan approval for the concept subdivision drawing entitled 2727 Balltown Road Minor Subdivision Plan, lands now or formerly Sukdev Singh by ABD Engineers and Surveyors dated January 10th, 2025, with its most recent revision of revision two dated January 28th, 2025, with the following conditions. One, sketch plan approval is a conceptual review of the proposed lot division for the purposes of classification and preliminary discussion as described in the Town of Niskiuna zoning sections 189-6 and 189-22. The location of proposed boundary lines, infrastructure, utilities, and improvements are subject to change during the environmental review, engineering, public hearing, and subdivision review process. Number two, the garage floor elevation of the proposed new dwelling shall be within one foot of the ground floor elevation of the existing dwelling. And number three, a 20-foot wide easement shall be added to future plat drawings along Balltown Road to facilitate a possible future sidewalk. Ms. Gold is a project lead.
And I so move.
Okay, moved by Ms. Gold. May I get a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Belovski. Okay, open it up to discussion. Do we have anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening.
Well, Ms. Belovski, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, so I think we had a discussion, a couple items that was requested. I'll start with the sidewalk easement. I had a chance to speak with Mr. Singh today, and he's okay providing an easement along the frontage of his property for both lots. So I think we're good there. And then, as far as condition number two, being one foot from the property or finished floor elevation of the north, I also talked to Mr. Singh about that. We are looking for a walkout basement here. Looking at the grades, I do think we can be within a foot, but I was hoping if we can maybe have a little more leeway on that because the, if you look at the center line of road grade in front of the existing home versus in front of our home, there's already a foot in grade change of the road in itself. So I'd like to just give a little more leeway. We'll obviously propose a grading plan and propose this garage floor elevation where you can, you know, maybe put it in a further resolution that, you know, it's got to be that or plus or minus something from our final proposed elevation. But I feel like from a sketch plan, it's kind of hard to agree and say, yeah, because I don't really have, you know, the exact footprint in the garage and everything. So, you know, if that's something the board can sort of weigh in on, like, are we set on that one foot, or do I have a little bit more leeway when we go further with the final subdivision plan?
What number did you have in mind?
I, like, if we can say within two feet, I think that would, that would help with the situation. You know, when I was looking back at the notes, I don't know where we came up with six feet difference in elevation height because, you know, we're, if anything, we were three feet off from the existing home to this proposed home. So that's what got me thinking about when I read the condition, you know, do I, do we really want to restrict ourselves to one foot, or can we have maybe two feet to play with? That's all.
I'm okay with the two-foot thing. We can open up to the other board members, get their input. Great.
And I'm okay with it, so I would move that as an amendment.
Yeah, I think it should actually say ground floor, too, the way you read it.
Yeah, the ground floor elevation. Okay. Any other thoughts from any other members? Okay. So we have a, we have a motion for Ms. Gold to amend item number two.
I don't have a second.
I was, I was going to recap it and then ask for a second. We have a motion from Ms. Gold to amend item number two to change from one foot ground floor elevation to two foot. Could I get a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Henry?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, though, the note is garage floor elevation, not ground floor.
Oh, garage floor.
We actually need to make that typo change.
You wanted to turn.
Is it a typo change? Because isn't there garage floor elevation in final?
There is. And actually, I normally go by first floor elevation. The, the six-foot Luigi came from this drawing. I did notice that there appears to be maybe two different first floor elevations on the one-story frame dwelling, but this corner says that the first floor elevation is 362, and then this one said that it was 368. And the new drawing that you submitted today, I think you had showing this front first floor elevation was actually 365? It was different. But yeah, I, I don't know if it's the ground floor elevation that we're focusing in and the first floor elevation.
Well, the garage floor of the existing home to the north, it's a detached garage, so I don't know if we want to compare it to that. But we do have a finished floor elevation of the structure, first floor.
Yeah, first floor, yeah.
For that property to the north, and that's 366.
366.
Right.
Which was much closer to the 368. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, what I was looking at right now is, is if I could keep our new garage floor at 366, which would compare to the finished floor of the existing home, but then you always want a foot, a step or two from your proposed garage floor to the finished floor. We had a finished floor elevation of 369, but after this discussion, I would probably drop that finished floor elevation down. So, you know, I just want to make sure we're talking and comparing the proper elevations. So, yeah, so I don't, you know, I guess that's garage floor elevation versus finished floor elevation when your existing home we're trying to compare to doesn't really have a garage floor elevation, right? So if we can just narrow that down, then we'll understand how to move forward with this design.
Okay, so what's the most appropriate language here?
I think it should be finished floor.
Finished floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Within two feet. Sorry, I missed that.
So condition number two will, will now read, "The finished floor elevation, FFE, of the proposed new dwelling unit shall be within two feet of the FFE of the existing dwelling." Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So again, motion by Ms. Gold. Get a second, please.
A second.
Mrs. Laflamme, second. Mr. Henry, could you call the roll on the amendment that's proposed for condition number two?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Millsbaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Aye.
Ms. Belovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye. Condition number two has been amended or resolution. Any other discussion items?
I don't believe so. I think those are the only, the two items that I was reporting back, so just wanted to share that with you.
All right.
Yeah, we dealt with the shape of the lots. You're starting out with a very irregular shape lot, and it's kind of hard to get two nice ones out of it, so lots, lot dimensions are okay.
The only thing I noticed, because it did go to the tree council, is the, the, the code would say two trees per lot, and the proposed trees are actually not in the Balltown Road right of way, which normally we say two public trees per lot. But right here, there's so many utilities, I think it would be very, not good to plant the trees right in the right of way.
Actually, I'm not sure the state would want them in the right of way.
Yeah, sometimes the state is funny about that, too. So I am personally, like, and so was the tree council, okay in this particular subdivision to have the two trees per lot be planted a little farther back, but you're only showing two new trees on the new lot, Luigi, and you actually have to put them on the old lot, too.
Well, have you seen the existing trees that are to remain?
I know, but our subdivision code says two new trees.
Two new trees?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you got a beautiful 36-inch maple and a 30-inch.
Yeah.
So we're going to crowd it up.
Yeah, and if you're putting them, yeah, yeah, I know, they are nice. You could do smaller flowering trees or something. You can come to the tree council, but yeah, you're supposed to have two new ones per lot.
Yeah, is that something this board can waive? Because I'm just, I'm looking, you got an overhead wire and a water lateral, and then you've got our concrete surface where they park, and then on the other side is the asphalt pavement. So I don't, where do I put two new trees on the existing home when they have a lot of utilities and already
Yeah.
paved surfaces?
I think it is something this board can waive. I'd have to look at the exact section of code, but if the board is saying that you can't put them along the road, you might be able to fit them in the backyard or something. Like, let's just look at planting two more trees.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to more trees. It's just, you know, looking at the plan here and the utilities, it just makes it difficult, you know.
Yeah, right. Which is why the tree council noted that they understood that in this particular case, it'd be really unlikely to be able to get public trees on this subdivision lot.
Could they be shrubs, like where the cherries?
I mean, another thing, Luigi, that we've also done is if one of the existing lots was very tight for plantings, we've put four on the new, like, the subdivision needs four trees, like, find a place to put them. Yeah, somewhere. Even if you sort of just do a line of trees between the new residential home and the, you know, multifamily building there.
But that's something the building department would handle when they, they see the final.
Yeah, so typically, when we do subdivision, it does push the tree planting to final CO, but I think if we can start incorporating the tree plantings on the maps, it makes my life a lot easier. It's hard for me to follow up on tree plantings among all the other things that are happening with COs on the houses.
I think for this resolution to keep it clean.
Oh, yeah, not, not for this.
We're not going to amend this any further, but.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I like the idea of maybe putting it along the property line on the new home, you know, yeah, I think that's okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right. There's no further discussion. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Millsbaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Aye.
Ms. Belovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye. Resolution is passed.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Resolution 2025-06. I will be recusing myself, and Mr. Laflamme will be handling this one. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so as mentioned, next is Resolution 25, 2025-06, a resolution for a site plan approval for a new pavilion at the Jewish Community Center at 2565 Balltown Road. Is the applicant here? Okay, you can come up if you want, but I'll read the resolution first. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board and the zoning commission finds a site plan application referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, grading and stormwater review. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, site grading changes in the plan for mitigating stormwater from the impervious surface of the pavilion must be approved by the Superintendent of Water, Sewer, and Engineering. Two, design. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall supply pavilion design information and pictorial images for review and approval by the Architectural Review Board. Do I have a motion?
I was actually the project lead, so I'll just say we did a site walk on Friday, and I think that the two conditions make sense and that there's been a lot of care and thought about where the placement will be, and I think it'll be an excellent addition to the campus at the JCC.
So you move?
So I'll make the motion to approve.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion to follow up the Ms. Goff's review already?
No, just that, Andy, I applied additional photographs in your packet, so you can really kind of get a sense of where it's going and see how the site looks that's in there.
Material types and things of that nature.
Did the ARB look at this one yet?
Yep.
Did they have any comments?
No, they liked it.
Okay, and Clark is saying that actually the ARB looked at this preliminarily and liked it. So I think, yeah, I think it's good to go.
All right, great. So if anything looks good. Mr. Henry, can we call for a roll for a vote?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Millsbaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Aye.
Ms. Belovski.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
I recuse.
All right. Resolution approved. Party at the pavilion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laflamme.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's it for new business. Moving on to discussion items. First up is 412 Balltown Road Suite D, a site plan application for a tenant change with signage Dave's Hot Chicken. The project lead is Mr. Khan. He is not here today, so I will be filling in for him. Do we have anyone representing the applicant online?
Yeah, Carly is here, and so is Jeff Levy from DLC Management.
Okay, great. So a quick recap from the last meeting. We were able to have the planning department take a lot of images offline of different Dave's Hot Chicken throughout the United States from coast to coast. They included those images in the package that you have today. There is quite a wide variety of a mixture of signage and facade art, some that is very streamlined, others that is very colorful. I think one of the things that it does demonstrate is that Dave's Hot Chicken has, you know, worked within municipalities, whether it's been existing buildings or working around some of the architectural language that's there. As of right now, all three of the signs are code compliant on the three facades, and we are currently down to the treatment of the facade, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the, the bold colors do still need a waiver.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe I saw some without the graphics.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see why Niskiuna shouldn't get the same treatment or lack thereof.
Okay.
Seriously, I spent a lot of time looking around the mall when I was there over the weekend. Well, it's not mall, but, and there's nothing, anything like that. So then I started to imagine, well, what if this one decides they want to do something similar in hot pink and purple, and this one wants lime green and vivid blue or something, and you can have a whole circus atmosphere. Not what we ever had in mind for the makeover of the mall. So I really can't support the graphics.
The, the Architectural Review Board did meet and reviewed the proposed sign package and the graphics that were there. Just to reiterate, this was in the package that we have today. They didn't think that there should be significantly altered colors to the exterior facade, specifically the awnings remaining the same color. And also, if any facade graphics were added, they would be much, much more muted, similar to what is in the Western Ave location in Albany.
Was there any feedback from, about the awning? Because she, they seem to not want to give on the awning.
I think the package as right, stands right now, it still has red awnings, correct?
Yeah, oh, you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now we can.
Thanks for bearing with me on Zoom tonight, guys. I will forewarn you, I have two very large German Shepherds, so if you hear barking, all is well over here. I did speak with the franchise owner, Jonathan, and also Dave's Hot Chicken, and we would love for you to consider the awnings. We understand that they are bright red and not quite what you're looking for, but we would, since we kind of eliminated the LED tubing, scaled back the graphics, and brought the signs within compliance, we were hoping you would consider the awnings. So we left them as is for now.
And the facade graphics, also some of the feedback from the Architectural Review Board, and the images that were collected shows quite a variation in facade designs. Is the current facade, we'll call it facade artwork, still that wraps around the entire tops and corners, still as proposed, correct?
Yes, that would be ideal. We were originally going to paint kind of the whole building white and continue the graphics down, but we have scaled back once we reviewed the code and realized that that's a huge ask with everything else. So we have scaled it back, so we thought this was a little bit more appropriate within, still staying within the Dave's branding guidelines that they're hoping for. So yes, the current package are the graphics we are hoping for.
So the white paint background would only be behind the upper portions and halfway on the corners, is that correct?
I don't think there's any white paint.
There's no white.
There's no white at all, okay.
At all in our current application. We removed all of the white, and there's just some spatches of color, kind of similar to Western Ave. On the front, there are heavy graphics on the side, and then a little bit on the back as well.
So just, I'm a little thick on this. The, the white color is not going to be there. It's going to be the natural color of the brick that's currently there.
Yes, yep, it's like a tan facade, so we're not going to paint it all white and then add graphics to it. We're just going to leave it as is to leave some of the natural color there.
And the cornice, it's red also. Obviously, lights are not in this application anymore, but the cornice will remain the natural stone.
Yes.
Yeah, the picture with the white paint was submitted by the applicant to show what the client originally wanted. But the one that is actually proposed is the same one that you saw at the last meeting with the red awnings, the painting, and the code compliant signs. We didn't get an updated package from that.
Okay. Because the one, the one, the letter, I think it's the letter A, halo channel letters has, the corners just look like they're background white around, but then if you scroll down through the rest of them, it just. the corners just look like they're background white around, but then if you scroll down through the rest of them, it just shows the the natural limestone color behind it. So it's it's not as, um, I guess it's not whitewashed in the background.
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right. So I think we're at a point where the applicant wants to move forward with the resolution. In fairness to them, we should give some feedback on what we think on the on the treatments of not only just the colors of the awnings, but also the facade. So you know, I spoke to Mr. Khan about this. We're both in agreement that we think that the awnings should remain the consistent color of the existing color, not the red that's there. And then as far as the facade art, I think him and I are split on that a little bit. I I don't mind it that much because it is reversible. If it was done not as as densely across the the tops and sides, maybe something similar to to the Western Ave location, I think that that could be something that I could definitely consider. But other other board members don't seem to be too keen on it.
Carly, I wondered, we looked at one, I think, is it Glenn's Falls or somewhere north of here, where the sort of the abstract art, instead of being spread out across the walls, it was a background rectangle and then the Dave's Hot Chicken illumination sat in front of it. So it's sort of a contained rectangle? And I just.
Queensberry.
Queensberry, okay. And I just wondered if that was considered for this? Because I feel like at that point, you're achieving sort of that branded look. But it's kind of contained within the sign and it's not spread out all over the facade.
Sure, in Queensberry, then I can try to see Eddie J's signs. Our installers will send pictures through a certain email once the job is done, just so you can see the completed project. I can see if I can screen share and get into that. It might take me a minute. That plaza, we actually, well, Dave's actually painted the entire background, just sometimes what we call the sign band. So it's very similar to what we're proposing on the side of this building. So we actually covered the entire sign band with graphics. It's very dark. It's very black. And then there's certainly a lot of pops of color and then a massive Dave's sign kind of in the middle. You know, we could do that, but then we'd be adding more graphics to kind of the front, and I don't think we love that idea. Correct me if I'm wrong, sorry.
But I mean, you do it in the front, but not on the sides. Is that what you're saying? It would just be one contained rectangle on the front of the building facing Balltown?
No, we would still need to have it on the sides and the back. So it would be very similar to what we have proposed currently, like on the side, which is covering the entire sign band. Where we tried to peel back and leave some of that natural color to kind of make it a little bit more cohesive versus like black and very bold. We tried to lessen the boldness, I guess, kind of on the front.
So breaking it up versus having it be sort of a chunk of color, I guess.
Yeah, instead of painting the whole thing, we tried to really scale back in working with both the code and also Dave's. We tried to come to with a happy medium.
So what I like about the Western Avenue one is that it looks like there's just pieces of the building that kind of fell off and there's color underneath. And I think that like, I think this one is, Clark found all of these, the Western Ave one, this is very similar to the Western Ave. It's like some, like you're leaving the facade. So the facade looks the same, but the art is just kind of letting you peek into this very colorful store. But it isn't a solid color. And so I think what Mr. Diopino is saying is that the, you know, the rendering that you're showing on the side, it looks like actually a whole band of color. Well, actually, you can see it better on this one because obviously you're not painting it white anymore, but we're, I think we're mostly like honing in on these areas here because these are fully banded color, like that would be something that's very different from all of the different, you know, treatments that we've been talking about. And I think that leaving it more like the Western Ave where there's just a little crack of color peeking out of the facade, which could be painted over in the future if it was needed, is me, is like my opinion, maybe a nice balance. If other businesses wanted to do something similar, we would have to review them because they're all going to need waivers and see how they would fit together. But um, I really think that it has to be pretty small, like the cracks have to be pretty small, opening up the color like they are in Western.
Yeah, so the the code does allow that accent areas and what's it say, building trim and accent areas may be brighter colors, including primary colors. So to your point, to the extent that the graphics are more accents than full banners, I I don't even know if it would need a waiver. It would just be approvable if it was on the on the scale of the Western Ave design. And to the extent that awnings are considered accent areas too, I I'm even, I mean, I think the red fits the brand. And it's a I think the graphics themselves, there are there are more accent features like what's on the screen versus big contiguous areas.
Can you go to the side elevation that's got the signage letter on it, the one you just had up earlier?
No, you can see it better on the white one. Just remember, they're not actually.
Yeah.
But you can see the
Right.
The color they have here.
So the panels that I like are the actual two end bays where the upper section is just the graphics. Those two, yeah, because it's it's, you know, it's an area that's blank, it's above, it's above the other areas. As soon as you start to wrap the corners, it becomes more of a graffiti type expression that comes around the back and sides of the building and the front. But those two, I mean, it is the side. If you had just those areas, it's painted, it's reversible, it's very easy to reverse it if there was another client that came in. And I think that, you know, with a lot of the examples that we saw, some of these definitely are much older buildings. You know, Dave's Hot Chicken has blended into a myriad of different established areas and has worked to harmonize with other surrounding businesses. So, you know.
And then, but then there would be no accent color on the main entrance side.
Correct. See, the main, the main entrance side has very limited space above it because where the sign is.
Right.
Go to the first one there, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, I think when I was proposing it, I was thinking just that rectangle. I was not thinking that it would then, if it was all contained to the front facing, that all those other big chunks of color would not be used, that we'd sort of just allow them to represent that look on the front in one space and not have it repeating along the side.
Sure, I think what Dave's wanting to do too is, this is kind of what we're proposing right here. Thanks for pulling that up, Laura. We eliminated kind of like the trickle down on the stone and kind of on the sides all the way down to make it blend in a little bit nicer with the other buildings in the plaza. And we also kept most of the artwork in between the sign band and I recommended eliminating all, you know, mural artwork basically behind the sign area because it leaves it kind of clean and nice looking. And then it's a little bit, in my opinion, well balanced here. By kind of keeping it up in that sign band area, it's a little bit cleaner and then having some of like the exposed on the corners, I feel like kind of ties it all together. But that's just also my opinion. But I think this looks much cleaner than what was proposed before. I think that was pretty heavy, pretty loud.
Carly, is there a designated color palette with a certain percentage of black used?
Um, I'm not quite sure on the percentage of black. I know from doing other locations, black really sucks up a lot of light. So when you do have a very, very, very dark black background, which you don't see super often, then you put a sign on top of it, it really sucks in the color and can create an uneven glow around the sign. So we've been trying to stay away from an uneven halo glow by kind of eliminating some of the black, which I believe is why it's kind of carried over into the sides with no lighting.
Right, because when you look at the Western Ave location, it's really used as an accent or outline versus the usage of the proposed where it becomes, like you said, almost like a vacuum of, like you said, it sort of sucks out the light. But that's why I didn't know if there was like, you know, if you guys, if if Dave's Hot Chicken had a certain percentage that was used with all of the colors within the palette that you use for these art decor, you know, installations.
I don't believe so. I know it's the same artist flies out to each location and does each of them custom, which is kind of nice. So the color scheme is the same. I also want to point out, as you can probably see in some of the pictures that Clark had provided, this picture that's up on your screen now came from our installers after we installed the signs. This is really what the colors will look like in person. This is a real picture. I know the renderings look very bright. They're not neon, they're not fluorescent. You know, they're, I mean, it's certainly not tan, but this, it is a little bit more muted than what the proof show. So I just want to make sure I point that out as well.
Along the lines of which one we prefer as a board, which we may have to vote on, the two different styles. This is an unpainted building currently, right? It is just natural stone.
Yes.
So you're changing it permanently is what you're thinking?
Changing it to be a painted building next to an unpainted section of the same looking building. I think that that lends itself to what Dave's recommending for me, even though I prefer the breakthrough idea that goes with the color bursting out and the building kind of falling apart because it's not currently painted. I think I'm siding with Dave's suggestion.
Would you be, oops.
Ah, sorry, allowing, oops, these two panels here as the only additional facade color.
No dripping down, just those two rectangles, yep.
This is a, this is just a, maybe a suggestion. Is there any way that those actual two panels don't have to be the actual painting on the building, but it can be an installation of just a pre-painted panel?
If you did that, I think you would have to count as a sign.
It's a sign, it would be a sign, wouldn't it?
Yes. If you added it on as a panel, I think it would have to be square footage and as a sign. We do allow the painting.
Yeah.
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 As long as the painting isn't an, isn't like got their name on it. But once it becomes something that attaches to the building.
Good, good idea. Maybe that's even worth the variance, but I I don't think it's worth it because then we'll have too many potential.
It'd be a big, and then theoretically, once you allow that square footage of sign, it could change.
Right.
Um, because we don't regulate what the content of the sign is, just the size and placement. So it's better to have it be painted.
So on the several examples that are in the packet, the point was made that a number of them don't have graphics, they just have, you know, the sign. Is that because of those municipalities didn't allow it? Or are those now being retrofitted to make
Good question.
Become the brand? And are those going to be added to those locations?
That's, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just noticed a lot of these ones, there's the, the, like the logo, which ours doesn't have, but a lot of these have like the chicken head logo.
Yes, um, so because the, like the sign band area is so short, basically, if we did one of the circle logos, it would be very, very small and hard to read. So Dave's does consider that as well. In this case, the sign band is very linear. So that's where they would like to see like the Dave's Hot Chicken verbiage instead of the circle sign. Sometimes you have a very tall area to work with, like we're currently doing a Dave's in Poughkeepsie and they have two giant eight foot circles because the facade area for a sign is very tall. So they kind of look at that and see what fits best. I also could be wrong, don't quote me on this, but those are also considered box signs. It's just a polycarbonate face. It is halo lit, but it does, it's almost like a box sign, where I believe the letters have to illuminate here in Niskuna individually, correct? Like channel letters in the plaza?
That's what we usually see as channel letters, yeah.
Sure. So I think that might look a little funky also, and it would be very small, which at the end of the day, would be more of a distraction to drivers rather than an aid. I can't give you an honest answer on the graphics because I didn't personally permit these signs here in these locations. I do know that in the past year, Dave's has kind of rebranded a bit and now requires all of their franchisees to go in with LED tubing around the entire edge of the building, along with the red awnings, and push very hard to get that approved because that's their look, that's their brand, that's really kind of what they're about. So they try to seek locations that will kind of work with them on that. So these could be reconsidered for more graphics, or the town could have said absolutely not, kind of this is what you can have. But in my experience with working with Jonathan, who has a few of these, like Western Ave, we are going back to add possibly more graphics, I have heard as of today, and awnings and tubing as well.
Okay, well, I think you've gotten a decent amount of feedback from the board members here. The Architecture Review Board has also taken a review of this and their comments are are in the package. You know, you've got a pretty complete set of drawings that are showing the retrofit out here. And probably at this point, I would say that we're going to call for a resolution for next meeting, as long as the package could come in before the deadline. And you can take away what some of the comments that we have here tonight and decide which direction you want to go with.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Third meeting they've been to so far?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, just another thing to consider is that the, I guess it's kind of a question, like if Dave's Hot Chicken is going to go in and we can just keep working on the sign package, we can do a resolution, kind of punting the approval of the sign, you know, to more iterations so that Dave's can submit a building permit to start the tenant change, because the tenant change is actually being held up by this sign approval. But if Dave's is really like, I don't want to go in unless I get X number of signs, then don't need to carve it out. But it's just something for you guys to consider if you need to start moving forward on the tenant change. We can kind of break the resolution apart so that if the sign package that's resubmitted might fail the board, you can still get the tenant change and then keep working with the board on the signs.
But so as a clarification, the signage is compliant currently.
Right, yes.
It's the colors.
Facade colors.
The facade colors are separate, that would be something that we could table.
Correct, like, or you could just put in a resolution that facade colors will be dealt with in a separate
Okay.
Solution or something like.
All right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but awnings and facade color, we will revisit next meeting. And then possibly, if we're allowed to do this, we could approve the signs now. Is that what you're proposing?
Currently, your three facade signs are code compliant. So they would be, and there's the tenant change and you have code compliance signage. What you're looking for is a waiver on the awnings and facade colors, and we'll call it facade renderings.
Yes.
So what we're saying is that we can take action at the next meeting, approving the tenant change and approving the signs. And if we're still not happy with the facade and the awning colors, we can kick that down the road a little bit, but at least you could get going on tenant fit up and the Dave's Hot Chicken signs. It's just a discussion to have with them because a lot of times we do the signage later. You just happen to be the sign person, so you came in with the tenant change and your signs are very flashy, so it's slowing the tenant change up. But if he needs the tenant change, he can have the tenant change, the signs are fine, and then we can work with you on the facade colors too.
Okay, I will definitely speak with him because I do think we need to get in there and start moving on things. I know everyone's kind of eager to get going on this project, but I do think Dave's needs the final look based on your decision for the awnings. So that's great feedback. I will certainly take that back to my client and we can kind of go from there and I will see you guys in the next. Um, so that's great feedback. I will certainly take that back to my client and we can kind of go from there and I will see you guys in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
All right, next up is nine twenty-nine Pierce Road, a sketch plan application for a two lot subdivision. Mr. Paleshi. Is here to give us an update and our project lead is Mr. Laflamme.
Yeah, so as discussed at the last meeting, um, you know, we left the subdivision lines the same as what you saw last. Uh, where you were asking for variances on ninety-five feet for each lot. Uh, which lacks five feet because you need a hundred feet in the zoning. But the, the lots are, are linear as we had previously discussed. Uh, we discussed, um, providing evergreen trees where the barn would come down. Uh, that would close in the gap for, uh, providing additional green buffering along that property line. We also discussed the footprint of the two homes. And what I did is went back to the applicant and they provided us the footprints that they could live with. Uh, especially width wise, I think the one thing I had mentioned to them, I know this board was concerned about the width and, and keeping as much of the trees on the north side as possible. So I asked them to provide me a, a building footprint that they felt comfortable with width wise. So that we can represent sort of the, the frontage and the width of these lots. Uh, keep in mind that, you know, the depth of these houses could, could grow a little bit. But I think with this board, we can sort of agree that, you know, especially along the northern, uh, lot one. Uh, the northern property line, keeping as many trees as we can. Um, what I also did was just from street view, uh, I, I snapped a picture uh, showing the existing tree line that's between, uh, this proposed lot one and nine thirty-nine Pierce Road. Uh, yeah, right here. And if you look sort of like in the center or like just to the right of the existing home. I think those trees would have to come down, but as you get closer to the property line, those, those tall pine trees along the property line on the northern side, on the, on the right-hand side, I think we can, we can keep those. Um, there's a twenty-foot buffer, uh, for your setback from that property line to the building setback. But the way we've proposed our home, we've proposed a home being twenty-two feet. So, you know, we're not looking to hug that side setback line. And I think that's something that we can agree with this board is providing as much distance from that property line to the proposed building line in order to keep that, that buffer and that tree line that you see. As far as the grading goes, we did provide, uh, the grading that was available to us. It's, you know, what we can get from, um, you know, the, the Sims, Scotty County, uh, LIDAR, uh, for the area. And, you know, I do realize that, you know, the nine forty-three Pierce Road, which is, I think, what, what brought a lot of uh, the residents here and the concerns that they've had during the construction of that lot, which we had nothing to do with. But that's where those contours came from, was from a previous. Uh, if the town is willing to provide us the final survey of that lot, that will show the current grading. And I can certainly update that as we move forward with the subdivision plan. Um, as far as stormwater goes, uh, you know, the contours kind of shows itself. Um, there is some flow that does go to the north, uh, but there is flow that goes to the west, like I previously stated. Um, as we develop and propose the proposed evergreens, we can certainly put that in a berm. So that when you build a berm along a property line, it stops any water from possibly going on to the neighboring property. So we can keep that berm and keep our stormwater with swales into our stormwater retention areas. Whether it be dry wells or rain gardens and keep that water on site. And, you know, provide the stormwater analysis so that, you know, we don't send any more water off the site as, you know, as you see today. Um, I know at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, the existing homes and garages and pavements that are, are already there onsite. You can see it from this aerial. Um, you know, there's already existing impervious that runs off this site. We can't send any more water off the site than what you see today. Um, so I think we're, you know, we'll definitely compare that in our stormwater analysis. Uh, some of the water will drain towards, uh, Pierce Road, the front halves, you know, obviously the driveways and the, some front halves of the, the rooftop. But then the rest could flow towards the back. Um, there's plenty of green space back there to absorb the water runoff. And in addition to our retention areas, so. Um, we feel that, you know, this, this is the, the best plan from what we've presented to this board so far. Um, you know, I know, you know, we showed a keyhole when we started here and at first we all thought that maybe that was the best. But, you know, coming back to this, which provides, um, layout that's more comparable to what you already see on Pierce Road. Um, you know, may, may be the, uh, the answer here. So that's the update I have. I'll turn it over to the board if there's any further questions.
Thank you. A great review. Um, this is the third revision. You've highlighted all the key points that I, I think that we wanted to re- revisit. The, the grade representation, your willingness to include that, if we could provide that would be at least responsive to one of the requests we've had. You know, we've gotten some great feedback from folks that are here today. We had problematic issues that we just need to avoid. The attempt to try to keep the, the trees, uh, I look at those trees as infrastructure and it's going to perhaps prevent any unintended, undesigned or, you know, incremental flow. So I really appreciate you having that buffer and keeping it there. I don't see how those trees, other than the ones that are right along the perimeter, will be kept. Um, I do appreciate the two additional feet, you know, you're not, you're not hugging that, that setback, which might give you some more options. I know that you're still requesting a variance, um, you know, so this has go to planning board appeals or the board appeals, this is only part of appeals. Um, you know, this is a problematic area that we've got a lot of, uh, we lean quite heavily on the comprehensive plan and have with the feedback. I'm looking at this and I'm seeing, you know, design that has reflected that request to keep with our, you know, comprehensive plan in this area where there's a lot of keyhole lots, the five-foot variance is probably the best method to keep with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the houses are not identical. I, I want to reiterate, we don't know what the final design of the house will be.
Correct, we do not know.
But making them not the same, uh, mirror images or whatever is, is good. The, uh, the trees in the buffer, I, I guess I would like to ask this one question. Can you just maybe review the dry well, storm, you know, stormwater, dry well slash swales, rain garden versus check dams? Can you just maybe explain the difference and how this, what you intend to do is different?
Yeah, so check dams are typically used to slow the water down. Um, you know, it, it is a method that's, that's typically used. It's a method that's typically used during construction. Um, when you have bare soils, you want to put check dams to slow the water down until grass can grow. Uh, those check dams can be removed in certain cases, once the grass grows. Um, we may use that method during construction, you know, until we can get full stabilization. But normally with a, a graded swale or a vegetated swale, if we design them right and keep them flat enough to, but still convey the stormwater runoff, I, we wouldn't need permanent, um, check dams. So it would just be a subtle grass swale, um, so that the water can drain to, you know, runoff from the rooftop. Would, would enter this vegetated swale and then it'd be directed, uh, towards our stormwater area. Um, if that stormwater area is just a dry well, you would just see a, a, a grate. You know, an iron grate that would be in the middle of the lawn. And, you know, if it, when it rains, the water would just, you know, run along the vegetated swale and find that open grate and go down into the ground. Uh, they call that recharge to groundwater. Um, but depending on where the groundwater level is, you know, we may have to make our retention area a little bit bigger. Get rid of the dry well and that vegetated swale would just go into a little bigger swale, which, you know, I don't know what the size of it would be right now. But that vegetated swale and retention basin would, would still be a grass area, you know? So when you look out the backyard, like, you know, you're not going to see, you know, a big pond, you're just going to see grass for the most part. When it rains, yeah, you might have a couple inches of water in there, but then when it stops raining, the, you know, water will go back into the ground and recharge. And it'll be grass again. You should be able to mow it most of the time. Um, so yeah, so, you know, we try to keep the stormwater simple, um, you know, and try to recharge groundwater. So it's infiltration is what we're trying to do here, you know, especially in that topsoil layer.
Thank you. Um, if, if you do decide to use a dry well, do, do we have an answer as to who's responsible for making sure that's vacuumed out or it doesn't get filled in over time? Whose responsibility is that?
Um, we're mostly in this case talking about private stormwater infrastructure. There's no way that the town highway department would take on, um, a dry well in someone's backyard or along two private property lines. Um, so then it becomes an enforcement issue. If there's, you know, if it's not being maintained, then typically it would come in as a complaint and the town would go out and try and enforce it. But these are, and then we do sometimes collect an easement on them. So that if the own, private owner isn't maintaining it, the town has the right to go in and do the treatment that's needed and backcharge the neighbors. We do that sometimes with high grass. We go in and mow the grass and then charge them the cost of mowing the grass, which is very expensive if the town is doing it. Mow your lawn. But, um, I mean, you could, you can do it that way, but it's definitely private infrastructure. This would not be public.
And that's fair. Thanks for answering that. It's just going to go with the land and we'll, we'll, we'll have a record that they exist so that if there were an, an issue. Um, I personally think the dry well, even though it does require that awareness, does act as a significant reservoir for unintended water from everywhere, um, being collected and would probably have a positive effect on the neighbors. Just by virtue of being there with a major dilute.
Dry wells don't typically work very well in Niskuna because the groundwater is so high. Um, you need to have lower groundwater in order for dry wells to. I don't typically see dry wells do any good at all in the town of Niskuna. I mean, Luigi can test the soils.
Yeah, we, we're going to have to do the test pits and perk tests and pick the best solution here. But either, either way, either method, you know, can, can work, obviously depending on groundwater and what the per capability of the soil is. And again, it all depends on, you know, maybe it's a combination of two, right? Like I, I may need that. And then, you know, if it, if the water comes out of the dry well, it stays within, you know, a certain area of that rain garden. And then over time it will, you know, kind of just the rain, the water will disappear, you know, and, and it become grass again and you just see the grate. So, you know, there's a lot of methods that, you know, we're going to have to test here. Um, but we got plenty of room and area to, to make that stormwater work. I'm, I'm confident that, you know, we're not going to contribute anything worse to these neighbors than what was, you know. It sounds like it was a construction, uh, sort of effect, you know, when all those trees were cleared. And, you know, the grades and the way the, the contractor may have created these swales and, you know, it just got passed them too quickly. You know, and again, depending on the, the, the time of season, you know what I mean? That, that all contributes to, uh, you know, how we can protect, uh, stormwater runoff, so.
So I just wanted to, um, just talk about the CAC meeting really quickly. Um, I, I, in some, in a lot of ways, I agree with Luigi, like, I mean, I think he's a competent engineer that can study the drainage. I mean, I think at some point we just need to, like groundwater is ground level for like most of Niskuna. So, you know, these stormwater things sometimes have to be pretty large. Um, but there may be ways to engineer collecting the water. But the big concern doesn't have anything to do, I think, with Luigi's engineering necessarily. The CAC was very concerned about taking down an existing single-family home and putting two new homes. And how many lots on Pierce Road would get opened up to sort of like that, that predatory, you have an existing single-family home. And this does need a variance and it will, if, you know, it goes through sketch plan, we'll have to go to the zoning board. And I personally think that is a very heavy lift for the zoning board. I personally feel that way. I don't vote. But the CAC was very concerned about what will happen if these lots don't meet code and the planning board starts to recommend, you know, engineering and drainage issues aside, that we are taking down a single-family home and squeezing in two more single-family homes. And what will that do to the neighborhoods? It's really a question. I think this is definitely better than the flag lot because the flag lot has its whole other issue, but we are still saying there's an existing single-family home that has two beautiful buffering side yards that we're going to take down. And just so that you guys understand, it is maybe two feet away from that lot line. But that house is still only ten feet away from the limits of clearing. And unless we really start identifying the trees and taking values for them and really like getting out there with the tape and stuff, these trees come down. It is such a struggle for my department. Wh- when the applicants are here, I think they are here with all good intentions. When Luigi draws his limits of clearing, I think he's saying like, yeah, I think we can fit it. It is so hard for me to enforce these limits of clearing. It is, it's beyond, and, and it causes problems with my department. It causes problems with the future owners. Sometimes the person who subdivides is not the person that builds. We ran into that on Shannon Boulevard. It happens a lot. They subdivide, they sell the lots, they make their money. The next person who comes in has a different house footprint, different ideas about trees. It changes a lot. So I just, I know that you guys are doing your best when you're like, okay, he's going to protect these trees. You know, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. It is a lot different when it comes to the construction. So we're really saying, we're going to take this house down. I mean, expect it to be like, you know, a bomb went off. That's what it looks like when it happens and it's very hard to keep the trees.
Um, Laura, on the, I guess maybe similar along those lines. The, the only map reference on the, on the sketch plan is for our two thousand and six survey. These lots have been here for, for years and subdivided around them. Do we know if there are prior subdivision maps that have notes or conditions that are relevant to this, to this parcel?
And, and we keep a GIS layer of most of the pre-existing subdivisions. On Pierce Road itself, I mean, Luigi could probably do a deeper check, deeper dive than even me. We have very few subdivisions. They've just happened so long ago. Um, some of them have even happened, you know, like they're not even recorded to Niskuna. Like, we don't have a whole lot of subdivision data for Pierce Road.
But I, I feel like looking at it, there is one close by.
So we will have new subdivisions, like we will have a subdivision plan for like Brookshire Drive.
Construction like two down or something from this one, is there?
We will have surveys of individual lots, but there wasn't really a concerted subdivision of Pierce Road. They tend to be like deeded lands from a hundred years ago. They're old, they're old.
Well, we, we compared this to several lots on Pierce Road, right? So you, you had, um, eight seventy-five, you have, um, eight seventy-five Pierce Road, eight fifty-nine Pierce Road, eight forty-five, eight sixty-two and eight thirty-four. And those were, you know, two lot subdivisions, three lot subdivisions. And several of those lots, like there were some of those lots that had a twenty-foot width on the, on the frontage. Twenty-five foot width on another one, sixty foot. And I think I mentioned this last time, like when you look at the average width of the, of the lots, it was ninety-four feet. Right? So, you know, we're proposing ninety-five. So I think, you know, the, the precedent is there as to what the average, uh, lot frontage is on the street and, and we're complying with that. Yes, we need a variance because code says a hundred feet. And then the other thing you had mentioned, the existing home, so that existing home like is not worth saving. Um, so you, that home has to come down and, you know, the opportunity is here. And when you, when you divide it up, you can see from the aerial, you know, it, it's the same size homes, same size lots as what you see around the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, and Luigi, I completely, I completely respect that that's the, the client's perspective and it's really important for you to bring those points up. But a counterpoint to that, which like I, I have been frustrated with this myself, is that, um, developers purchase these homes and actually don't do the maintenance. And I mean, we had, we ran into this, the, um, on Balltown Road, like those homes, because they weren't properly maintained, ended up having to be demolished because they were like a attractive nuisance. But I felt like there was deliberate disinvestment in that single-family home because then it can be a good argument, that home isn't worth being lived in, I'm going to take it down and build two more. And I don't like to see that disinvestment in the existing single-family homes. Um, I do see it sometimes, actually for the express purpose of an argument to take it down and build two new homes. Like I would much rather be out there enforcing, um, that people aren't maintaining these homes. So that we get out there and they do maintain these homes rather than seeing that disinvestment so that they can be subdivided. And that's just my opinion.
And wasn't the initial plan to keep? And wasn't the initial plan to keep the house and put the?
With the flag lot behind, yeah.
It wasn't to tear down the house and rebuild it and put the flag lot behind?
And, and the argument that I made with that chart actually shows that this lot for a flag lot would have been the smallest flag lot the town had ever approved. So we're just getting, either we're just getting smaller and smaller, smaller flag lots or we're talking about taking single family homes down. And I just come back to, there are some times that something shouldn't be subdivided. That's, I mean, I really think at some point this board is gonna have to decide where to draw the line. I don't know whether or not it's this application or not, but you're going to see more and more of this because we don't have a lot of open land. The developer is gonna go out there, Luigi's gonna do a great job. That's what he does. They're gonna hire him. He's gonna figure out how to make it work, but we are going to see stuff like this. And where do we wanna say that should not be subdivided? It's, it's the smallest flag lot we've ever seen. You know, you're, you're disinvesting in the single family homes that you can put two more. I'm just, I'm just putting these points out so the board can consider them.
Is the home currently occupied?
No.
How long's it been vacant? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay.
I can speak a little bit to this. So, so I appreciate Luigi's opinion is certainly a reflection of his application, applicant, but the house is not a tear down. Um, that's why we really looked at this flag lot. However, I think if the zoning board of appeals approves this exception, which they very well may not for, for all the reasons mentioned. I do like that it's consist, this is a somewhat consistent with the comprehensive plan in an area we have problems. I'd rather, I think I'd rather see that consistency than more flag lots, which I think would be a higher instance in our neighborhood. We have a lot more opportunity for people putting houses behind and around and so I, I like the efforts that were made. It's directly responsive to our comments and, you know, pointing to the comprehensive plan. However, it doesn't fit, you know, so it does need the variance and we'll see if, if that's where the line is, is drawn. But the house, the house was sellable. I walked through it. I was fortunate to represent a buyer, uh, prior to, I think this one or even owning the property. I may be wrong on that. I don't know if this owner's owned it for a long time or not.
I don't know.
Okay, um, I don't think so. To Laura's point, I don't think it was an intentional uh, disinvestment, but, um, that's how the person chose to live, which they, was within their right. Uh, but the house is not a toss, tear down, toss away house. It's just in the wrong location in this situation.
It's actually sitting right in the middle of the lot where it should be. I do not think it is in the wrong location.
For this applicant, it's in the wrong location because it would recreate a, a flag lot situation.
So that someone can profit from two lots.
Yeah, or.
Right, but that, that's.
Or the recipients.
But that's not the application we have at hand. That was the, the initial one, which I think we had some good feedback on that one, so.
I just have one other question, may I? Um, we heard a lot, we have heard a lot about the issue with water in this vicinity. So the question I have, Laura, given what, given what you talked about, is this being sort of ripe for subdivision in other places? Are there other places that are either, are there other places where this would sort of similarly be possible on Pierce? In other words, if this moves forward, are there four or five places within the vicinity? I'm just thinking about the collective water issue.
Um, I mean, that was actually a question that came up at the CAC. They wanted to study the corridor and see how many more would potentially you know, bought with the intention to, you know, sort of flip. But we're not talking about flipping a house here. We're talking about tearing down and flipping it into two lots, one to two lots. Um, uh, we can look at it. We haven't done a full corridor analysis of that area. I think the drainage challenges that we know in particular are looking from this area to, towards Brookshire Drive. So you can see a lot of the lots right there, but actually even the one that's directly adjacent to it, that James Beckers, that they, I think their driveway goes to White Hauler, one of those, but, um, that's a huge lot.
There's a huge lot behind these. Yeah, to the west of these, but, but there's no frontage. So keyhole would be the only way and that would be a variance and there's definitely other areas on.
Yeah, none of them are easy left, like how somebody would come in and subdivide that. We, we don't know, but it, it's not protected from never being subdivided either. Like you'd have to figure, I mean, yeah, there's a very large undeveloped lot, open space lot there.
But we could take a look at that too.
Yeah, I think we should, because the CAC wanted us to do that anyway.
All right.
I don't think I have any further comments. Um, I think the board has shared a lot of their concerns, good feedback. I mean, are we in position to?
Yeah, your next step would be to call for a sketch plan.
Um, the only thing I would add is that, you know, if this does move forward, the interesting thing is, is that you have two proposed, two proposed houses with the houses coming down with a hole in the ground in between the two. Um, if there is an opportunity to take advantage of that to collect water from the houses or something, obviously there's multiple engineering things you can look at. You know, you already have an existing hole in the ground that you could utilize that doesn't have to be excavated, brought fill in, things like that. Maybe that helps. Um, you know, construction sometimes is an opportunity to improve a landscape and, I mean, you're well aware of that. And a lot of times the last developer to come into an inserted neighborhood inherits a lot of the downstreaming and all of the other problems that are there. They're not necessarily have to fix all the other properties, but you know, if, if you can gather some of that information from the contours that are now current and see how that would affect this, you know, stormwater area, that's probably gonna be pretty helpful in our evaluation, at least at the next step.
Okay, good point.
Okay. But I think we're also at the point where I think we can call for the sketch plan resolution, right?
Hmm.
Can we do the sketch resolution before referring to the, or before he goes to the ZBA?
Yes, just for sketch.
So we will, we will be reviewing a, a, a finished plan. If, if it gets approved.
Yeah, because the sketch plan approval, you have to do the rough concept, right?
Right.
Um, you can either deny it and say why you, what you'd like to see change or you can approve it, then he can submit a minor subdivision application, which gets denied because at that point they're formally submitting a minor subdivision application that has the 95 feet and the 95 feet. Then the next step for you guys would be the, um, the recommendation to the ZBA. And clerk and I can do a denial letter based on the minor subdivision application.
If the ZBA were to approve it, it comes back to us.
Correct, yep.
Would we have the ability to deny this sketch plan or the house location roughly? In other words, let's say we decide, I don't know if we can, the same, trees have to stay. And the house to the north has to go further back in the property, not be symmetrical and all that. Is that even an option if we approve the sketch plan?
Uh, Rob's making a face.
So it's already a tight lot, right? So it's, you need the five foot uh, road width variance for both lots regardless. So there's not a ton of room here to move the house one way or the other and still meet the sideline setbacks. So.
But I'm just saying like, are we committing to the general location of these structures at this junction?
So I guess Luigi can comment on this also, but if the idea is that you don't love it, but you're gonna send it to the ZBA first to see if it squeaks by there and then you're gonna make a condition that is gonna make it super hard for them to build it. I think Luigi's client would rather know now before they invest even more time and money into it. So, um, that's not a legal argument, but, um, that's a practical thing that if I were Luigi's client, or if I was the attorney for his client, um, we'd just let it know upfront. So I think you have to work within, like you know the lot, you know where the trees are. A lot of those things are known already, so.
Yeah, and I, I can chime into that too. So as far as, you know, like you said, there's not much room to go, you know, east or west, right? But, or north or south, sorry, in this case. Uh, right, you know, but we can certainly take that house and slide it further back, further away from Pierce Road. Um, my understanding is that we can move it as far back as the rear setback line if we really wanted to. I mean, every applicant has the right to submit a building permit and, and put the house on the rear setback line in this case, but does that make sense to all of us? Is it logic? No, but the code allows you to do that.
It may not in that ca, and so it, it depends. In Niskiuna, we have a code that if all, if the houses around it were built before 1971, then it actually has to comply with the average front yard setback and probably in this area, most of the houses were. So you might not be able to do that without another variance from the zoning board. Um, but.
But I don't think that's logic here. I think where Mr. LaFam was going with it is to save a tree up front or on the side, if we were to move it back another 10 feet or 15, whatever feet maybe from this position, just to save that extra tree, then maybe that's where you were getting at is, you know, does that make sense, right, to, to save so, and get more buffer maybe um, along the, the side of, you know, the existing neighbor, right?
If that's the case, then I misunderstood the question. Clearly you would have that latitude, right? Like if you can mitigate some aesthetic issues or make it less intrusive to the neighbors or potentially help the drainage issue or not make it worse by leaving in place some trees or that sort of thing that are sucking up a lot of groundwater, then clearly that's a, you know, that could be addressed in final site plan.
Thank you.
Or the final approval.
My only point of asking was I don't, you, you are now given more feedback. We were given feedback from our, our planner. You, you, you had the benefit of overhearing it. If the house is located there, Laura's right. We don't know just how much clearing will actually occur. You know, oops, we have a bigger machine than we thought. We just can't work around the building. But relocating it, I don't want to preclude that. I don't, I don't want to eliminate the possibility that maybe you'd come up with a different design that would allow to keep that infrastructure, you know, that natural infrastructure in place. Keep the house, make it even less symmetrical, meaning two houses don't look like mirror images to each other. You come up with something different. I just didn't want to limit that from being a possibility. That's why I was asking the question.
And then just to wrap up with the trees, so enforcement is very difficult with the building department as far as getting an application, demarcating what trees should be saved, and then all of a sudden developer comes in, completely clear cuts a lot. So at some point, this board is going to put some pretty harsh conditions on an applicant with a monetary number that we're going to enforce. Okay, at some point that's going to happen. And the first time the fine goes out, developers are gonna talk. So I think, you know, we know that this applicant has a little bit of a history on this same road. We've, we've definitely talked about the integrity of the trees on these lots, especially lot number two. It's very heavily wooded. It looks like, you know, not much is being touched there. That's good. I don't know if that will need a stormwater retention. You'll find out when you do your, your evaluation, obviously, but again, you know, at, at some point, it's just gonna be, we're gonna hear enough of the clear cutting between the neighbors and the billing department that, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be conditions put on. So this may be, this may be a candidate for it. I don't know at this time, but just something you might want to talk about with the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have, you know, I've, I've relayed the messages from this board in regards to just clear cutting trees. And, you know, that's not the intent, you know, it costs money to cut trees down. So, you know, if we can save a tree, then, you know, it's, it's dollars in their pocket the way they, they explained it to me, so. I'm all for it. I'll design it and, you know, but you're right. You don't know what happens after you get the permit, right? I agree with you. I've seen lots that look great and we've seen a plan and then all of a sudden you drive by and it's a week later on a Saturday and you can see for miles. And you would think that, why would the developer do that? They're not black walnuts. They're not, you know, some sort of species that, yeah, I'll take the $500 fine per tree because I'm selling the tree for 5,000. That's not the case. This is just convenience and, um, you know, especially in these, these more established, larger lot neighborhoods, the trees, the trees are a buffer between the, between the properties. That's, that's a good thing. I mean, on the side of town where I live, there's a couple trees and they're great between the properties, but we don't have a ton. You know, these are, you know, these are all demarcated with a lot of vegetation between, which is what makes Pierce Road appealing to the people that live there in that neighborhood. Yeah, I, I, I agree and I, I think it'd be beneficial for both the existing neighbor and the new homeowner that will move in here, because I, I don't think they want to open wide, right? They, they wanna have some natural vegetation as well, so, yeah, we'll definitely, uh, relay this message again. Okay, good. All right. So I think we, we covered quite a bit tonight and, uh, thank you for your time. All right, so just go over next step. So net, we'll be back in a couple weeks so that a resolution can be, uh, presented.
I, I'd like to propose, I'd like to propose two things from the planning office. One would be that we do that analysis of the other lots on Pierce Road and how many of those could have one home taken down for the benef, for the idea of building two new homes. And then we have some spreadsheets on the exact path that a subdivision project would follow from sketch plan to the next stage. And it also calls out each of the requirements that, that you're kind of acting on at the sketch plan phase, at the next phase. So just to make the process crystal clear to concerned residents of the area, especially, we, we could show that at the next meeting. Just, just to make sure everyone sees the detailed process. And we do also have a TDE who's been kind of briefed on the project and if it got sketch plan approval, that's where typically the TDE would get more involved reviewing all of Mr. Plesch's work.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henry. And then I just have one more question. So, uh, the ZBA, right? So we have to come here. If a resolution is passed for a sketch plan approval, we then make the subdivision application to get denied? So you think like?
You would need to get all of that to us by March 17th. The 15th falls on a Saturday, so we'll give you the benefit of the weekend.
Thank you.
Um, but between the, the sketch plan and then we can get denial out very quickly, you'd want to get the appeal in by March 17th in order to go on the April meeting, or your next deadline would be April 15th to go on the May meeting. It's usually the 15th of the month, but I just was looking up March for a different person today. And I know that, um, the 15th is a Saturday, so I told him the 17th.
But that application is the subdivision application, minor subdivision?
No, 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 your appeal, your appeal to the zoning board needs to be in by March 17th. Yeah, that's your timeline there.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thanks for your time. Okay, next up on discussion items is 31 East Street, a site plan application for the addition of an external fuel tank. I believe we have, uh, representative for the applicant online.
Yes, to do, Janet Conant.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So you've owned the building for a couple of years now, correct?
No, a year.
A year, okay, so a year. And looking to add an oil tank to the backside of the property, correct?
It would be a diesel fuel tank.
Fuel tank, okay, all right. Couple questions. The location is not visible to the roadway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if we have more information on.
It's, it's not visible to the neighbor either.
Okay.
It's probably visible to the bike path in the winter.
Yeah.
But in the summer, it's probably not.
No, definitely not. And the tank actually is gonna be brown. So it should blend in, um, with the building. It's a double walled tank with an alarm on it. And then we are actually leasing the tank. And so they would actually take care of any maintenance. Um, it's a concrete block building, so it's resistant to fire now that we expect one.
What was the size of the tank?
Five hundred gallons?
It's about four, about four feet. It's a 500 gallon.
And what, and what was the purpose of it?
To fill our truck that's down there. The diesel prices are ridiculous. Um, we have a diesel pump and warranty that we use for all of our vehicles. And we don't have one down there and the fuel bills for him filling it, Stewart's or wherever is quite a bit more than if we put in a tank like we have.
Okay. Are, are there any other tanks on the property at this point?
No. Well, no, I can speak back to the propane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you, would you ever have trucks that don't live at the site come and use that fuel tank, by which I mean, would you increase the traffic by having a fuel tank on here? Because I know you have a number of different sites.
It's reckless for our truck only.
Is there any, any unique fire suppression systems that are needed to be added?
No. They're not necessary. And then eventually when we get done with everything else, um, and we get the outside of the building done, which will be a later date, um, it should all blend in together.
So is he intended to cover this at some point?
No, not as of right now, but we're hoping the, we're planning on doing the, the building, the concrete block building that is pre-existing, like an old railroad station barn. So would be in the dark colors and then the tank itself is brown, so it would blend in with the building.
So I can tell you, because I live in this neighborhood, that, that Northeastern Underlayments has been a great neighbor and that the trucks in our neighborhood have gotten a lot better. But I do want to tell you guys that when we review this, because it was a pre-existing outdoor storage building, then we made a little accommodation for an office. The more you add to this, and I'm, I'm telling you, Northeastern has been a great neighbor. But if Northeastern doesn't last forever, the more commercial things you add to this, the more commercial the site gets. So that's your balance there. And I definitely do want to make sure that you think about that because we originally um, didn't even want to let this building have a water line because it's supposed to be dry internal storage. But in order to, you know, there was going to be someone there, so I think they do have a water line now. Now we're talking about a gas station, well, a fuel tank in the back. It's not a gas station, just a fuel tank, but.
Actually, we don't have the water line in yet.
You haven't put it in yet?
Nope, we're waiting for spring.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it is consistent with the use that we approve. And it is leased and, and not permanent, right? Like, there's no, there's no concrete slab that needs to be poured for this, correct?
No, but every time you add a utility, it makes it more shovel ready for the next company. And I'm telling you, like, this company has been such a better neighbor than the last company. But, you know, the next company, I don't know, because two companies ago were, were pretty, it was tough.
What I was getting at was since they're going to lease it anyway and not own it, couldn't there be a condition that it would have to be removed when?
I don't think. I mean, Rob can jump in, but I think that we have been hearing that you should, you don't put planning conditions on an, an entity. They're with the land, like it doesn't go with an owner. Special use premises are different, but I think site plan, I don't know.
Yeah, so I think, like, so I'm just shooting from the hip. I haven't thought about this issue before. I think once it's there, even if it's leased, then the new owner, like, I'm not sure you, how you protect a future owner and their expectation of thinking that they can have the same thing that the current owner has. So um you know, short of a deed restriction, like if you include it in your resolution, future owners just don't know what's in the resolution. So it would have to be something that was in the public record, so they would have record notice of it. But then again, but separately, we've talked about this in a number of different contexts tonight. Enforcement's super hard, right? Like you just don't know, so um.
Yeah. And deed restrictions are usually enforced by neighbors, not the town of its own volition, yeah.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's, it's a, it's an allocation of scarce resources at the town's level to, how they want to allocate time and, and resources to, and then it's hard to enforce stuff.
And I do know sometimes even after the use has ceased and the tank has been leased, if it's a certain number of years down the road, the company that is leasing it to the property sometimes doesn't think it's worth removing and just leaves it. Because I had that with a neighbor, a propane tank.
Question for Lauren Clark. What other companies in town have an above-grade diesel tank?
I think there's a list.
I did provide a list. But only two of them are in Niskiuna. The rest of them are Schenectady.
Are you looking at other neighbors having propane tanks or something?
It's Paige, um, it's actually in your packet.
Yeah.
It would be the ones that are directly in Niskiuna would be the D E Research and Noel. And then the ones outside of Niskiuna that are in Schenectady would be the Northern Nursery, Callahan, Betty and Crane, BK Companies, William Lennard.
Well, I've seen Jackson, yeah, Jackson is in Niskiuna.
Oh, it is.
And they all have active, they all have active fueling stations above grade?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if it's still true, but there used to be some residential properties that had propane tanks.
Um, this, this neighborhood has propane tanks because it doesn't have natural gas. Yeah, yeah. And that's.
To give you an idea, this would sort of look like somebody had um, a fuel tank for their furnace.
And that's what I was getting at.
Just twice the size of a residential, 250 gallon.
I guess, is there a proper site plan? Is it just the drug, the sketch with the yellow box? Is that, that's the, that's the tank location?
That's where the tank is going. And then on the back page is actually um, the whole setup of the property.
That's the survey and then that's locations back here.
How close is this property to residential?
Um, it directly.
We have.
Oh, go ahead, Janet.
We have a house right next door, a blue one.
Yep. What is the likelihood that or the potential for like an environment, it's all kind of um, consequence of like if an accident happened or not necessarily, I'm talking about combustion, but just like if the, if it's leaking and it's.
Yeah, so that's actually really highly regulated. So even spills of a fairly minor quality, like, I'm not sure, maybe like.
Yeah, five, five gallons is a reportable spill onto gravel or anything like that. But 500 gallon tank isn't going to be in any, it's not going to be in the petroleum bulk storage program. It's too small.
So one, one of the things that's actually good about this is that they don't own it and the diesel supply place, supply is both um, servicing it and, you know, checking on it when they provide, when they fill the tank. So I think that's actually helpful here.
And then so.
And also it's a double wall tank, so that what it's set up for is if the inside wall of the tank starts to leak, it would give an alarm before it ever went through a second wall.
Right, the, the, the problem you get with the fueling stations though is not, it's not necessarily the, the double walls of the tank. It's the dispenser being left on the ground and the handle.
That was my next question.
Things like that.
I believe there is some language in the, the packet from the company they would be renting it for about the installation and um, kind of barriers to encapsulate any spillage. I think some of that would probably come at the building permit level too, if it, if it was approved by the planning board. But I think there is some information about that with um dams or things to contain any, any spillage to some degree.
Correct. And the other thing is, as far as the handle is concerned, it's going to be a gas pump handle like you would see at a regular gas station. It doesn't have a lock on it to keep it open. So if your hand comes off, it shuts off.
So with other fuel locations, especially we have propane tanks or stuff around stores, there's typically some bollards that are added as a crash barrier? Would this be a candidate for that?
Well, it's not really a big enough tank for anything like that. I mean, the one we have right now is a thousand gallon. And we did build um, a coverage over it so that the guys going in could keep dry while they're pumping fuel on the truck. Um, and that has wooden posts.
Just to confirm though, immediately, this, this tank is going to sit between two entrances to the garage, one being a vehicle entrance?
The, if, yeah.
So I think we should require a bollard.
Okay.
Yeah.
The overhead door would be to the right of it.
To the right of it, then to the left of it is a pedestrian door?
Right.
And do people ever park right in front of that door?
No.
But there's dry, there's asphalt that will be, is it asphalted yet? I can't, I know that was uh, down the road plan.
No, it's gravel. Um, and as of right now, we have two people, well, I have one person that's there during the day, comes in, parks and stays. I have a salesman that comes in, does his thing, leaves and comes back. I have a spray thom truck that comes in in the morning, picks up his rig and goes and returns at the end of the day.
Right, but they all do.
And they all park to the front.
To the front, okay. But they could, someone could come around the back and back up or misguide themselves into the opening, the door, the garage door. So yeah, I would think two bollards because it's pretty, pretty long.
Yeah.
So this project would be a good candidate to get a project lead on. And maybe set up a site visit so we could get some photographs and get a little bit more images here so the people that haven't been to the site or visited get familiar with what we're, what's being proposed here.
Okay.
All right. Um, any other questions? Discussion items? Okay, um, Ms. Conis, we'll have the building department reach out to you with the project lead and
Okay.
talk to you about what the next steps will be.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your time.
Okay, that.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Okay, that concludes our discussion items and we move on to reports. Laura? Or Clark?
Clark went to the Saratoga training and he put together just some real quick slides that I think it'd be useful, just get them really fast.
Sure. So we, we just wanted to put together a couple, couple of slides. Um, Sarah, Chris, Andrew and I all went to a, a conference in Saratoga a couple of weeks ago. And um, there were about 730 attendees. Um, the, each of us attended two morning sessions and two afternoon sessions. I'm not sure, but I think there were five sessions at each time slot, so you picked the four sessions that you wanted to go to. I went to changes to the regulations of state wetlands that you need to know that um, is very good, given the changes that are happening and there's, it's a little bit murky about that. And that may play a role in the Niskiuna Harbor project. The other one was very interesting called Know How to Say No, Practical Strategies for Disapproval. And it wasn't really just about disapproval. It was really a refresher on how to make sure you're taking a good, hard look at projects and making sure that you're not making an arbitrary or capricious decision, that you're really putting it through the, through the paces. Uh, the third session was record keeping, minute taking and public meeting laws. And then the fourth one was actually very interesting too, striking the balance of parking and trees. Um, what is your local code working with you or against you? And that one talked about some kind of novel ideas that some communities are using. I think Wilton um, was an example in Clifton Park where the presenter gave a presentation showing that a lot of their parking in a large mall type area was never being used. And he had time stamped um, aerial images to prove that. So what they were doing was allowing some infill development of a commercial site within that parking area rather than taking down trees and developing some other green space within the town. And it, and not only did it allow development and get rid of the just sea of asphalt, it let them create some more um, wayfaring of pedestrian traffic and things like that. And it actually brought some organization into a sea of asphalt. And um, there are some examples in there, I think of Clifton Park and Wilton. So we put all this information in a folder. Um, and I think it's in the meeting packet too, just so anyone who wants to um, could take a look at those. But just touching on a couple of other points that we think um, could play a role. One was on the new wetlands and Andrew and Sarah and um, Chris, you know, jump in if, if you would like. One of, one of the new criteria is there, there are 11 criteria that if an area meets any one of those 11 criteria, it's automatically considered an area of unusual importance. And we really think that based on talking to some people, um, all of Niskiuna per the US Census, latest US Census, is considered an urban area. And that, that, their definition of an urban area is not what we might think of as an urban area. So, you know, I'm no expert and that, that's by no means a concrete decision. But it, it sure seemed like everything in Niskiuna may be considered um, an area of unusual importance, which would have ramifications on wetland buffers. So there, there is a new process that projects will have to go to in submitting to the DEC and having um, a jurisdictional decision made on their projects. And we'll all learn more about that as some of these projects that are on our agendas go forward. The second, the other one was Know How to Say No. There were a couple of speakers there with 30 years of experience and they just had some really interesting insights. You, you can see that if you flip through here, just, this was just their off-the-cuff estimate of how many projects get approved without any changes at all, you know, how many do get some changes from the planning board. Uh, um, and they talked a lot about all of us doing our homework and being, being prepared. As Mr. Hess mentioned, you know, they kind of talked about bringing up the big issues first and being clear on some of those. It was a really good session. I would, I would really recommend anybody um, flip through some of these slides. We have all the slides. It was a really nice um, seminar. The third one was, in all honesty, pretty dry. Um, they just kind of pitched the value of templates and being a consistent process. And then here's some little data on the, the fourth session. You know, they talked a little bit about the balance of when we require landscaping, the amount of space that gets required for the landscaping takes away parking spots. So that takes away um, retail area to a developer. So just a little bit about thinking through the eyes of a developer, how they view that. They talked about um, the gray fields. That was the, the project, the infill of Wilton, Wilton Square. They also had an amazing statistic that the Druthers in Clifton Park had a $700,000 landscaping budget. So that seems pretty amazing. And um, as Mr. O'Flam mentioned, they, they recommended treating trees as infrastructure in your code, that they really are a vital part of all projects. So again, if you get a chance, flip through some of those. There's a, there's a lot of good slides with more detail. But um, those, those, just a quick update on those sessions. And I, I don't know if everybody went to the same. I heard, um, Andrew, you went to the seeker, seeker one, right? And had a good question for that. So, yeah, very good, good seminar.
Thanks, Clark.
All right.
Um, he actually just reminded me, Niskiuna Harbor is on the town board agenda for tomorrow night, just so you guys know. So I, the recommendation from you guys basically just got put directly into that resolution. They didn't. They didn't ask for any changes, so, there.
Very good.
Tomorrow at 7?
Tomorrow at 7.
Anything else on the reports?
Um, no.
Okay. Does anyone have any commission business? All right, so there's no further commission business, get a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold, second by Mr. Bill Calhoun, and all in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:52 PM, thank you.
Bye, Trish.
Hi, guys, it was a good meeting.
They have to separately deal with, make a recommendation on the variant?
What I'm going to do on that show...
But that's a separate...